Please stand.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we beseech your divine guidance in this meeting. Keep us ever mindful of our obligation. Grant us, dear Lord, wisdom, tolerance, and courage that we may well serve our county and fulfill our trust. Amen.
Morning, everyone.
Good morning. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes for the public hearings of December 4th and 5th, and also the commissioners' meeting on December 5th.
Second.
Discussion? Roll.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Next up, do we have any public comment regarding any pending resolutions for today? If not, we will move on resolutions. County engineer, Ian, we have Dan Becker here.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Seems weird seeing the sun.
Yeah.
I've got two resolutions for your consideration today. First resolution is necessity to close Mark's Road for surveying work to be done along for road construction. And the second is necessity to close Spencer Mills Road between Chatham Road and River Corners.
Moved to approve both resolutions.
Second.
Discussion? Roll.
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick? Yes.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Jeremy Sinko, our sanitary engineer.
Morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Five resolutions for consideration today. The first is amending the sewer use charges for the Medina County Sewer District. The second is amending the water use charges for the Medina County Water District. The third is authorizing the sanitary engineer to obtain an easement for the off-site sanitary sewer on Poe Road for Mountville Reserve subdivision. The fourth is awarding the bid for the Gayor Tower Water Storage Rehabilitation Project. And the fifth is declaring the necessity to replace existing water mains and install a new water pump station along Substation Road and authorize the sanitary engineer to advertise for construction bids.
Moved to approve the five resolutions.
Second.
Discussion? Roll.
Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you, Jeremy.
Next up, we have Denise Testa from planning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So my resolution, I have a resolution in front of you requesting authorization to request qualifications and proposals for program management services of the Medina County-led Safe Ohio Program.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Roll.
Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes. Thank you, Denise. Next up, we have Holly Mirren, our human resources director.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So my resolution, I have a resolution in front of you requesting authorization to request qualifications and proposals for program management services of the Medina County-led Safe Ohio Program.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Roll.
Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes. Thank you, Holly. Next up, we have Brett Thomas, our finance director.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
I have 10 resolutions here for you, and I'm going to work to get through them quickly while I still have a voice. First one is amending appropriations. Our second one is transfers of appropriations. Our third resolution is expenditure adjustments. Fourth resolution is revenue adjustments. Our fifth resolution is our cash transfers for the week. Our sixth resolution is the print shop revenue. Seventh resolution is our gasoline rotary fund. Eighth resolution is awarding the bids for diesel at the highway garage. The low bid on that one was Sunoco. Our ninth resolution is the purchase of gasoline for the engineering center. Our low bid there is Ports Petroleum, and boy, I've not seen a number like that in ages. And then our 10th and final resolution is our weekly bills in the amount of $2,430,234.29. As always, copies are kept in the auditors.
Moved to approve the 10 resolutions.
Second.
Discussion? Roll.
Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes. Thank you, Brett.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Chris Jacob, our county administrator.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Six resolutions, I believe, yes, for you this morning. The first rescinds a prior agreement with Ohio State University. This was for the solar project at the county-owned facility housing Ohio OSU Extension Service on Medina Road. This would instead, previously, OSU was going to use grant funds to process payment for the project. Because of their lengthy process of adding new vendors in their system down in Columbus, they've asked us to consider paying it directly and then be reimbursed from the grant fund itself. So this will allow us to do that. Next resolution processes revenue adjustment for the Port Authority. This is to credit the county's general fund for its 50% share of the recent land sale at the Technology Park. This amount is after deduction for closing costs and marketing fees. Next resolution authorizes the procurement process for a replacement vehicle for the Medina County Veteran Services Office. They have an aging vehicle that they use to transport clients to medical appointments that they wish to replace. We're uncertain whether we're going to have to go out to bid or whether we can find something under the competitive bid limit of $75,000. So this would provide us with the option to move forward in whichever fashion is legal and most efficient. Next resolution approves an amendment to the agreement with Aramark Correctional Services for Food Services at the Medina County Home for 2024. There was a submission of a rate increase by Aramark at 6.4%, which is based on the CPI index increase from the previous 12-month period, measurement period, September to September for Meals Away From Home Limited Restaurant Meal Service. And the next resolution amends a contract with Western Reserve Area Agency for the purchase of community meals by the Medina County Office for Older Adults. This is for supplemental meal services that we use local funds to procure. And then next resolution and final resolution accepts a grant award between the Office for Older Adults and Western Reserve Area Agency on Aging for their Medicare Improvement for Patients and Providers Act for 2023, 2024, grant award amount $9,579.
Moved to approve the six resolutions.
Second.
Discussion? Roll.
Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chris. Okay, next up, we have department updates. And first up, we have John Callis with a NOACCA update.
Good morning.
Good morning. So I want to start off by thanking you all for recognizing the passion that I have for this and letting me participate and have my voice heard. It's very rare that a guy like me gets a voice at the table. So I want to thank you all very much for recognizing that and giving me an opportunity. I guess first off, I did read the summary that Bethany provided you all. She really, she really hit it on the head, and she gave a very good technical analysis of this NOACCA workshop. But what I'm going to offer is my own ground-level approach for my two days as a regional stakeholder. So the workshop was put on by ICLI USA at NOACCA headquarters. If you remember, ICLI was contracted through the matching $50,000 grants from the Cleveland Foundation and Gunn Foundation to conduct NOACCA's regional greenhouse gas analysis. This is the data that's being used to drive NOACCA's Regional Climate Action Plan, and the workshop was them circling back after the Climate Action Plan Engagement Series to start in exploring the actions to achieve NOACCA's stated goal of a reduction of 63.3% of greenhouse gases by 2030 and net zero by 2050. So who was there? In attendance were local elected officials, sustainability directors from Cuyahoga County, the city of Cleveland, Cleveland Heights, Case Western Reserve University, planning directors from Cleveland, Cuyahoga County. Also on hand were representatives from both the Cleveland and Gunn Foundations, the Cleveland Metro Parks, the Cleveland Museum of Natural History, Oberlin College, the EPA, the RTA, ODOT, Lorraine County Community College, Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District, Metro Health, East Ohio Gas, and Bethany. So I'm not certain how these workshops work in the corporate world, but NOACCA sessions generally consist of educational PowerPoints followed by breakout group exercises to put on paper what everyone had just learned in their presentations. So this workshop fit that bill. Excuse me. Day one started with a visioning exercise. It went into climate risk and vulnerability assessment, resilience, adaptation, and funding. When they do their visioning exercise, they were looking to set common goals for our shared future. A lot of talk about common goals and shared future. They got into the climate risk vulnerability assessment that covered the extreme heat, heavy precipitation, severe thunderstorms that were caused by climate change. When they talk about resilience, they talk about adaptation and resilience, and sometimes how they're used interchangeably, saying that the difference is adaptation specifically refers to the actions to manage risk caused by climate change. Resilience goes beyond climate. It means that we're making communities stronger in many ways, immune to disruption. So hardening for climate change will harden other things, is what they're saying. They really, really touched a lot on the historic funding that's available right now. The work that they've done so far in the Climate Action Plan has put them in contention for their pool of $4.6 billion in EPA funding. So they really were driving that point home. Day two was more funding, greenhouse gas inventory, discussion of prioritization of transportation, building, and industry. So again, first, right out of the bat, or right off the rip, they were talking about more historic funding. They just really want people to start filling out these applications for these grants. As they went through, I think we're pretty familiar with their charts and their data. They had a pie chart that offered four sectors of the emissions, and that was commercial, residential, transportation, and industrial. There was a biology professor from Oberlin that was in attendance, and he took a little bit of issue with that because Oberlin's economy, or I'm sorry, Lorraine County's economy is 40% in agriculture, and he didn't feel like that was represented. So it was explained to him that it was divided up amongst the other sectors. So to me, that means that Cuyahoga County is looking at it from a Cuyahoga County lens. They are not considering the necklace communities, the necklace counties when they, when they do this research. That was evident, and he shared that same concern. From there, we did breakout sessions. So over the two days, we conducted six lengthy breakout sessions. Breakout sessions were four to six people at a table with a facilitator. We had these huge gigantic sheets with, with action items. And so we'd have an action item. Next to the action item would be like the co-benefits of that item. Then there would be feasibility of completing that, the jurisdiction on who would be in charge of it, and then they would have comments for context. They handed out stickers, so I was back in kindergarten, and we got to use the stickers to, I guess, rate the probabilities of getting these things done. We had red, yellow, green stickers, and then blue was marking our priorities, the top five generally is what we'd want to see getting done. I had a lot of issues with the breakout sessions. It was very obvious that little time was allotted to completing these forms. They used a lot of social pressure at the table and facilitator pressure to move things along. We headed to the point where, you know, we were asking this lady questions, and she was laying on the table. She was so frustrated, you know? And, you know, we had, it was myself, it was Bethany, the guy from East Ohio Gas, and the guy from Lorraine Community College, Lorraine County Community College. And I'd say that we were probably the most rebellious there. And by rebellious, I mean that we asked questions. That was, you know, we really threw them for a loop. They didn't know what to do. We posed it to the facilitator, she'd have to call somebody over, and they didn't have answers for any of this stuff. And, you know, that was troubling to me. So from that, I kind of came to the conclusion that much of this Climate Action Plan is already decided. And this workshop is just necessary to collect the input necessary to justify the measures in the plan. So that's what I got from that. The one thing that I did want to do as they were giving us our presentations and they were lecturing us, is I wanted to kind of slow down the steamroller just by asking questions. So I asked a few questions, and I think that's where they were kind of exposed. They were talking about all the new jobs that are going to be created by going in and retrofitting these houses, getting rid of the natural gas and moving towards, you know, electrifying all the houses. Like I've talked about before, we're going to lose HVAC techs, we're going to lose electricians. They talk about losing automotive mechanics. This stuff's all going to be streamlined by the time it's done. There's not going to be any skill involved. And you could read along on their big charts, talking about setting up approved contractors to do this stuff. So you're going to be talking federal money. To be an approved contractor, you're going to have to meet a whole series of requirements. And it's going to be diversity, equity, inclusivity stuff. It's going to be vaccination stuff. It's going to be all that stuff in order to work, is the way that I see this stuff. They don't, they don't hide that in my eyes. Another thing that they discussed was, right, so, so we have city planners on site, and we're talking about doing housing. You know, they want more multifamily housing. They want to build up the cities. They're building these cities up on 100-year infrastructure, some of it, and we're talking about electrifying everything. I asked what the coordination was with the local utilities as they're building these things. All the planners just looked at me. They were all puzzled. They had no idea. So there's no coordination between themselves and what is going to fuel this new world that we're going to live in. In the same vein, ICLI broadcasted a lot of opportunities for funding for just private citizens. If you wanted to convert your gas stove or your, your gas water heater to electric, they were showing you all the money that you could qualify as a rebate essentially. So to me, what that meant was, is now you have all these people that are providing either the federal or state government with all their information, their address, and what they're looking to do. And that would be a great way to take that information and work along with a local utility, you know, based on where everyone's living, to make sure that we can, we can handle these extra loads that are going to be put on the grid. And when I ask these questions, they look at me puzzled. So no one has any real answers for this stuff. And that's pretty basic to make this work. And I guess that the point is, is they do, they preach about resiliency, they explore feasibility, but it's all downstream to us. It's, they're not responsible for any of that. They're the ones, that is, resiliency in its infancy is when they have their, their plans to create this stuff, and they're not doing it. I did realize after seeing this then, too, there was some talk about local zoning in some of the rural areas. And the people were a little bit irritated. They weren't irritated at the planners and the utilities for not planning in the cities. They were irritated at the suburbs and the rural areas for not permitting renewables everywhere with, with, you know, just kind of unsanctioned application of the renewables. So in my eyes, clearly, they're after the space in our communities, and they're after the space between our ears as well. Definitions were a really big thing during all these, all these breakout sessions and our lectures. Talked about stakeholder. We've all heard the term stakeholder. I still don't know what a stakeholder is. I asked them, you know, I wanted to pause them. And Grace admitted that they need to be a little bit more clear on this language because not everyone's a planner, and not everyone was a planner. And we were confused at the table. That was the majority of our issues, is we wanted to understand what we were doing. They talked about Vision Zero. No one understood what Vision Zero is. I had actually, at the end, I had to clarify with the city planning director from Cleveland what Vision Zero was, because our table didn't understand, our facilitator didn't understand. What Vision Zero talks about is, is zero traffic deaths on the city, on the city streets, essentially, or any street for that matter. So that is just, you know, I was always told, growing up, you never say never. I don't know how you say that you're going to have zero traffic fatalities in a street. So that was troublesome to me. A lot of the people were answering these questions, they had no idea what they were doing. Vision Zero was also, they have it on the garbage trucks in the city of Cleveland. They'll have signage for it. So all the while, no one knows what it means, our subconscious is being propagandized with it. So that was troublesome to me. You know, they talk about first last mile, that's using electric scooters or bikes, ride share, to get between the first, from your front door to the first mile of your public transit. So whether that would be a transit hub or a bus stop or something like that. So this is all very private vehicle, moving away from private vehicles and moving towards public transportation. They talked about the enveloping of houses. Again, just, just these terms, this jargon that we don't understand, and where the drivers behind the plan essentially with, by completing these documents. They really rallied on about the Canadian wildfires. If, if, I think it was 82% of the people that went to the Climate Action Plan Engagement sessions, they said, were on board with the, the climate action, you know, what they wanted to do. And to me, what that meant is, out of the gate during those sessions, they started talking about the Canadian wildfires. And if you acknowledge that you saw smoke in the air, I think that's what they went with, that you acknowledge that there's climate change. Now, they talk about it ad nauseam. What they don't discuss, as I found a New York Times article from September, and it talked about up in Quebec, how they had all the universities working to go plant trees to revitalize the damage the logging industry did. Now, when they did that, they used some black spruce trees, and they planted them in rows six feet apart from each other. But the problem is, you know, the firefighters that, that worked those wildfires up there, they refer to those trees as gasoline on a stick. And they weren't doing the proper maintenance up there. So the idea is that these fires started, you know, just from a natural cause and just went up like a tinderbox? Like, we're not exploring the root causes of this stuff. And when you ask questions like that, they would get visibly upset. So I took major issue with that. You know, they were using really technical terms, the ICLI people. They would use very technical terms. They talked about the crazy weather and really high heat. Like, that's how they were describing it. They were saying, they referred to the Canadian wildfires as, this is not normal, and that's just crazy. So, and this is what we're being met with. They don't have an understanding of what they're doing. They're just there to push those sheets on us. So I will say that they were unhappy at my presence. They were a little uncomfortable. I was obviously very pleasant to them the whole time. But to me, it just goes to show that the more pressure that they get on that level, the more uncomfortable they're going to get. They cannot answer these questions. I am a construction worker. I am, I don't have a master's degree. These people all have degrees. And if I can go there and I can poke holes with some of the most simple questions that I can dream up, it's a real problem, and they understand that. So that concludes, that concludes my presentation.
Well, we've obviously sent the right person. We're very glad you're there. We're very glad you're going to continue to monitor this situation for us. We appreciate it very, very much.
Thank you.
I have a question, too, you mentioned, because at the board meeting that we had a couple weeks ago, there was a mention of the Climate Action Plan being, that there's still another acknowledgement that it hasn't been drafted yet. I have my questions about that, too, that I think you touched on. But they mentioned specifically that it, that there were some requests, and I'm wondering if it's, it's from what you mentioned, to break out agriculture as its own industry segment. So was, that seemed to be the first that had come up to them when that was raised by, was that the college?
The guy from, yeah, the guy from Oberlin. They acted like it was. I can't, I can't imagine that it was.
Well, I mean, really, we had sent a memo out earlier in the summer and raised some questions about the greenhouse gas inventory, just at least on an offset standpoint.
Yeah.
Not specifically breaking out agriculture, because it, you know, that, I do think that's one of those things, if it's truly going to be a regional plan, there needs to be an acknowledgement of that. But I also, I do have some concerns with, some pretty fundamental concerns with, that up to this point, at least, the emphasis has been very Cleveland-centric. I think that's, that's been, you know, we've seen that other times in, you know, in NOACCA as well. And I don't know that I have a lot of confidence in the, the groups and organizations that have been behind this from the get-go, being the best-suited ones to encompass agriculture and bring that into the plan. And because that is such a big economic driver for the other counties, I'm going to reach out and, and make some suggestions that, you know, some, some better subject matter experts are involved. I've had ongoing dialogue with Farm Bureau and other representatives who I think can maybe play that role for them. They've admittedly had kind of a backseat in the process because it hasn't been egg-specific, but now, if that's a changing focus, I think it's, the time is right.
I fear that, you know, if I was sitting there in the Farm Bureau, whether I would want to get involved in a process that already has a foregone conclusion and bias that is actually anti-agriculture, in which case, by participating, they have actually acquiesced or given up their opportunity to, I'll just say, object to the conclusions that they've already determined. So I, there's no doubt this is Cleveland-driven, this is Cuyahoga County-driven. You have the, ICLI is a liberal think tank, they're basically then activist nonprofit that's out there. If you look at the, the other parts of their, their organization and the policy initiatives, I would say, I would say diametrically opposed to much of our political culture in Medina County. They typically, much more, I'll just say, a philosophy that most of our voters would not support. And I just, from that standpoint, they're utilizing, they've already come to a foregone collusion, they've already are pushing an agenda, and there's no doubt that they're, they're not answering our legitimate questions, and for a reason. Because in truth, the answers to those questions will actually reveal what they're actually trying to achieve. And I thank you for being there. I really thank you for all your, your persistence, your tenacity, dwelling down on the questions and continuing to, you represent Medina County well in, in that, in that, it's just wasn't yourself. Certainly, it was your, your insight, your input, your energy, but let you, with the Board of Commissioners and our delegating that representation, I think you did, you did very well to do that. And thank you for your, your interest in doing that. It just, it just appears to me that an organization, when you start talking about resiliency, it's about self-reliance, too. And that's the one thing they're actually going against, self-reliance. Being dependent upon a grid is not self-reliance, is actually counter to that. And in which case, you're going to be, either from a financial standpoint or a physical standpoint, become much more reliant upon an industry or an entity. Government is actually deleterious, I think, to our political culture as well as our county. And I just think we just, thank you for, for doing that. I, I guess we'll have to wait and see that this money grab is going to go after what they're going to use that money to do that actually would undermine our local decision-making, our businesses, and our people. I'm very fearful of what they're going to ask the money to do.
Yeah. And hopefully, just, you know, by myself being part of it, I'm talking about it a lot more now.
Good.
And, and people are definitely starting to open their eyes to it. So, you know, you get to a point where you don't know what kind of pushback you can even have, but I guess we'll find, it's better to find out that way than just by people rolling over and not paying attention to it. So I look forward to challenging them further in the future.
Well, we're not going to go quietly.
Well, and I, I know Rhonda is aware of this. John has also agreed to be my alternate for the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Council.
Oh, good.
Because one of the things he touched on briefly there, but that is a big, a big concern of John's, and I think ours up here as well, has to do with private property rights and eminent domain and some of those risks. And it's, it's not to stand in the way of any progress, but I think just to, to your point of asking some of those tough questions, I thought he was well-suited to serve in that, in that role, in that particular advisory group.
John knows, in the House, I did a little bit of, that tried to move it forward.
Yes, I do. And I appreciate that greatly as well, so.
100%. Bethany, would you come up?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, John.
I won't take too long, but I did attend the, the second day of the session. I just wanted to share a few things. I did email you, but just wanted to read them into the record. The, the group that John and I sat in, we really focused on a, more of a flexibility and choice, and encouraged NOACCA to look at an all-of-the-above approach. So there were some concerted voices in the room that were trying to encourage that approach to be read into the, the recommendations. The other tables were a little bit more prescriptive and regulatory. When they shared the greenhouse gas data, the, the information that, that really struck me was the fact that they had a table that showed the highest impact actions that we could take to reduce greenhouse gas emissions by about 18 million metric tons of carbon by 2030, which would get towards their goal. 48.3% of the proposed reduction would have to come from the utility companies investing in clean electric generation. So our table asked, you know, how are we going to, you know, make sure that the grid can handle this increased demand from the building electrification and the electronic vehicle usage? And the response of the facilitators was, it's the job of the utilities to anticipate demand and build for growth. They'll just need to build new solar plants and new transmission lines, as they always have when they build new utilities. And the facilitator strongly inferred that they're just going to have to raise rates on consumers to be able to do this. So our table asked, you know, how are we going to, you know, make sure that the grid can handle this increased demand from the building electrification and the electronic vehicle usage? And the response of the facilitators was, it's the job of the utilities to anticipate demand and build for growth. They'll just need to build new solar plants and new transmission lines, as they always have when they build new utilities. And the facilitator strongly inferred that they're just going to have to raise rates on consumers to be able to do this. So they're putting this on the backs of pretty much every electric user across the grid. The other major question that they didn't answer was, one of the participants, and not me or John, asked if the study had calculated the cost per action of these recommendations to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, because their thought was, where can we get the biggest bang for the buck if we're doing these things? The facilitator said, no, they did not include the cost of implementation as part of the exercise. So they've left out a huge factor in how this whole study is going to come about. The last thing that I wanted just to add was, John mentioned the participant who asked about the agricultural sector of greenhouse gases, and said that it really did need to be part of the survey. Joe McDonald basically said, they had received your memo, you were mentioned by name, but they didn't have time to update the study, since they had to have it completed by March in order to apply for federal funding in April of 2024. But they would likely revisit the survey data for the comprehensive Climate Action Plan, which is due in 2025. So it's not over, there may be more opportunities to get our perspective in a comprehensive plan, but I just, I needed to commend John because he was very respectful, but very firm in saying that NOACA needed to listen to the non-Cuyahoga County voices at the table. How much they are going to implement that remains to be seen, but I think we were at least well-represented from Medina County, so I just wanted to share that with you.
Knowing there's another report means it could always get worse, too.
That is true.
But no, I appreciate the clarification. And the opt-in methodology, that did come up a little bit in passing, too, the last board meeting. That was the first time I had heard Climate Action Plan being discussed in a context of some degree of voluntary participation. And I believe particularly when you look at the voting numbers up there on the board, if these efforts result in a scenario where we can kind of bring our best practices to bear, as we've been talking about for months up here, and say, well, on these aspects, these are things we're already doing that we think feed into, you know, best practices on some of these things, without having it be dictated to us from a regional government entity, I think, I think that is a degree of success that we can all point to, you know, kind of these collective efforts have resulted in. So I was encouraged, I guess, by just that aspect, that for the first time up there in a board meeting setting, I heard some references to, it's not going to be top-down dictated, it's going to be the communities are going to have to opt in.
Well, we have a strategic economic development plan model already at the regional level, where every county has its own. And basically, it's the compilation or aggregation of those. And so the Cuyahoga County can have their initiatives, Medina County can have our initiatives, as well as Lake and Jogga and Lorraine. And I think that's the model we ought to be talking about. And as I understand that grant funding that they're looking for, they can, Cuyahoga County can go ahead after those grants and get all the electric scooters they need in order to have people use public transit from their doorstep to the river. It's not going to work in Medina County, it's not going to work in Homerville, it's not going to work in Spencer, excuse me, but Medina County, we ought to stay focused. But to drag us in to a plan that we literally, they're creating, obfuscating the real process and what they're really trying to accomplish, I think, I just is absolutely wrong. And I, we're not going to give up our freedoms or our local authority, whether it's the township or the villages, or even our cities or even the county, to basically acquiesce to a plan developed by Cuyahoga County.
Right. And the elective, the elective opt-in component, to me, it needs to be more than just calling it that, it needs to be some of the things that we've talked about before, which is the funding of, the general funding of the, I'll say, principal core work of NOACA can't be conditioned upon compliance, because at that point, it isn't an opt-in.
My fear is the metrics they're using, and it has to do with the greenhouse gas inventory, where they show us per capita 20, 30% higher than every other county. And in which case, if they try to use that as the metric, then actually, there'll be a greater burden on us to find out how we're going to be able to reduce greenhouse, this theoretical, not a measurable, but theoretical generation of greenhouse gases. And I think that that's absolutely wrong. That's what I fear, that our businesses, that our community, our citizens are going to be penalized because of some, like I said, theoretical generation of greenhouse gases.
And I also, I'm glad Bethany raised the point about kind of the cost-benefit breakdown, the cost component not being factored in. Because if you've studied or reviewed any of the other studies that NOACA runs, be it an interchange profile study or anything else, the one thing I will give them credit for is they generally keep, you know, they net everything against the cost. Their cost calculation, maybe sometimes I'd take issue with, but it's at least an objective way, or a recreatable way to come up with that. The fact they haven't done that here, I think, is quite telling. Because I think, you know, if we held them to that same standard, would the benefit outweigh those initial costs? And again, that's not to say that it isn't a good motive to be working towards more renewables and all those kinds of things, it's just to say, to put this artificial deadline on it and not have it be market-driven, and some of the things that we've talked about many times, is, I think, a real risk for our regional economy, and it's a major concern of mine with all this.
I would wager probably the criteria for the grant does not require a cost benefit.
And speaking of cost benefits, I'm still all in for leaving.
Understand.
I've said it before.
I know.
But yeah, I think we've got a ways to go there.
Yes, we do.
I do, I want to acknowledge the efforts of both of you for being up there, and also maybe take a minute to, I think we've made some progress, relative and minimal though it may be, from where things started earlier this year, but it's an uphill battle from here. So thanks for your contributions to it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, next up, we have some commissioner resolutions. We have a resolution to organize the Medina County 911 Program Review Committee and appointing members pursuant to ORC 128.06. We detail the voting members, and we also appoint Aaron Harrison, County Commissioner, and Terry Grace as the elected official.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Roll.
Hambley.
Yes.
Harrison. Sweattick.
Yes. Next up, we are reappointing a representative for the villages to the Medina County Council of Governments on Drug Enforcement, and we are reappointing Mayor Carol Carter.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Roll.
Hambley.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Sweattick.
Yes. Any public comment? Okay, we will move on to discussion. Steve, do you have anything?
Not really.
Aaron?
I mentioned about the Bike and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, which John is going to be my alternate. We also had two vacancies on the Rural Advisory Committee. We had one trustee who resigned, and then one was a county employee who's not working with the county anymore. So I think Chris Cosman, who's going to be a York Township trustee, has agreed to fill in the one role. If either of you have any suggestions on the other, I think that might be an open.
Is that an active committee?
It is, yeah. And I think probably more with some of these discussions around climate action and renewables and, you know, those kinds of things, I want to make sure we've got people who are, you know, able to put in the time.
And should the, since you have Chris Cosman, should the second one be somebody, an employee, like Denise, or?
We've got Denise on there.
Actually, Denise, we have three seats, we have three seats on there, yep.
Okay.
So it could be another, I mean, I think we could select pretty much anyone who's a good voice of the rural community, so I think we've got a lot of latitude there. And then I left out the Economic Development Subcommittee, which Bethany and I are both on. I didn't have an alternate on that, and so Julia McNabb agreed, she's-
Oh, she did?
On Westfield Council.
Oh, good.
And a business owner, local business owner, so she agreed to serve in that role, too.
Super.
So we're just trying to fill out our roster, make sure we're, to the extent we have a voice, that it's being utilized up there, so.
Excellent. Anything else?
New Year's resolution. No, that's it.
Chris, did you have anything? Bethany, anything in additional?
We did receive, I was going to give you each of them, we did receive our quotes from the two companies for the hearing loops over at the courthouse. So these are the quotes, we're going to really wait to make a decision. It's been put in as part of our Healthy Aging Grant to potentially get a portion of this covered. The two companies do have pretty significant differences in prices. The one we've already used for one of our buildings, and that is the lower quote. So we're not ready to decide just yet, but I did want you to have both packets.
Okay.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Are these the folks at the library just completed one? Did one of these do the library?
The one with the fax sheet?
Yeah.
Oh, no, the library, I don't know which one the library used. Laura used the fax cover sheet one for her building.
Gotcha.
For office for older adults.
Right.
But I'm unsure which one did the library. But, okay, I will entertain a motion.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Roll.
Hambley.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Sweattick.
Yes.